All righty. How about a roll call?
Commissioner Seifert.
Here.
Commissioner Mahajer.
Here.
Commissioner Lopez.
Here.
Commissioner Blanco.
Here.
Chair Dickerson.
Here. Okay, well then we have the approval of the planning commission minutes of April 2nd. If everyone has had a chance to look them over, or if anybody has any questions, or wants to discuss something, please do, otherwise I need a motion.
I move to approve the minutes from which meeting?
April 2nd.
April 2nd.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much. Public comment period. Speakers may provide public comment on any matters within the subject matter's jurisdiction of the commission. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, maximum fifteen minutes for public comment period. Unless a majority of the commission object, the chair may provide speakers more or less time to speak. All comments or queries shall be addressed to the commission as a body and not to any specific member thereof. Pursuant to government code 54954.2A2, the Ralphen Brown Act, no action or discussion by the commission shall be undertaken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except to briefly provide information, ask for clarification, provide direction to staff, or schedule a matter for a future meeting. Are there any public who wish to speak? I don't even see any public, all right. Do we have any secret public out there, slips? No? All right. Then we will move on to the public hearing, and we will start with a staff presentation for the continued item, former Sears building remodel downtown permit at 226 East Main Street. Can we hear from staff?
Thank you Chair Dickerson, members of the commission, public. My name is Carol Zizanheni, and I am presenting the continued item for a remodel of an existing 114,000 square foot former Sears Reebok department store in the town center, East Mall. This is, for an overview and a reminder, this is an aerial of the 5.4 acre project site. It is located at the southwest corner of Main Street and Miller Street. The existing two-story building was constructed with the Town Center redevelopment project in 1986, and has been vacant since 2020. The project is in the Town Center District of the Downtown Specific Plan, and the parking lot is in the Gateway District of the Downtown Specific Plan. Building itself is attached to the Town Center Mall, and since this project is over 10,000 square feet in size, a downtown permit that is reviewed by the Planning Commission for a recommendation to City Council for a final determination is required. The project was also reviewed by the Downtown Revitalization Committee in February. So just as a refresher, we saw this a couple weeks ago. This is an existing site. The tenant improvements include remodel for a grocery store, and up to four smaller tenants on the ground floor, could be a larger space, and two anchor tenants on the second floor. The site improvements include refreshed landscaping, reoriented parking aisles and stalls, additional pedestrian accessibility from the main streets, Miller and Main Street, to the building entrances, and then additional loading bays, trash enclosures, operational improvements for the grocery store and future tenants. So as background, at the April 2nd hearing, staff presented the projects with recommendation that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the project to City Council. At that hearing, the commissioners raised concerns about the lack of windows on the second floor of the Miller Street elevation, imbalanced doors on the second floor of that same elevation, and then the excessive height of corner tower elements on the northern elevation. So the commission moved unanimously to continue the item to the April 16th hearing this evening, directing staff to work with the applicant to address these concerns. So before you tonight is a modified project, which includes modification of the corner elements. They were lowered by two feet, and the cornices were reduced in size, as suggested. Additional landscape details have been added to the second floor Miller Street promenade, including large planters where trees can be placed, and benches, as well as relocating that second floor door that was noted in the prior hearing. So this is the before and after view of the building elevation. So on the top is the before, and then on the bottom is the after. I've indicated with the red cloud that there has been a reduction in the cornices of about two feet. The architect has worked to reduce the overall appearance of over large tower elements, and give a little bit more prominence to the center element. Additional figures will also be, help show that difference a little bit. So this is a before and after showing the artistic rendering of the Main Street elevation. As you will see, the angle of this rendering is a little different, but additional details, including trees and the parking lot, have been added to provide additional perspective and context for the changes that are being proposed. Signage is also included on this rendering up on the top here to indicate what the tower elements would look like with signage applied to it, or installed there. We'll also add that the applicant has their own presentation with additional rendering, so they can go through the elevations and the changes in more detail. So I'm just going to focus on the changes with the architectural elevations. So similarly on this, this is a Miller Street elevation. It shows an additional two-foot reduction on the Miller Street side for the tower. This yellow arrow over here shows the location of that middle tower, and then the relocation of that door. This figure does not show, architectural elevations do not show landscaping, so this will not show the landscaping proposed by the architect. The next slide will. So this is again a before and after view. The applicant has provided a floor plan for the promenade, so it is showing in an enforceable way that staff can enforce the proposed deck planters, tables, and chairs, and additional outdoor furniture that can be applied to this promenade as part of the landscape plan for the building permit and for the parking lot. Staff will be requiring these second floor planters be installed at the same time to address the concern about the blank wall on the second floor there. And then additionally, for ease of implementation, the architect has also provided color and material detail showing the proposed planter or something similar that would be included with the building permit. So the project was adequately covered by a previously certified EIR for the Downtown Specific Plan. No further environmental review is required under CEQA. So the staff has received, before I get to my recommendation, staff has received a letter from Gaines and Stacy LLP, and this is a letter discussing a condition which was raised in a previous letter at the April 2nd hearing regarding a condition of approval for installation of a bus stop. And Public Works engineering staff is available to address that. And a second item that was not raised in the previous letter was a modified condition that was referenced in the staff report regarding the level of review that this, or future downtown permit applications for the second floor tenants, which are not, they don't have a tenant, the applicant does not have a tenant selected just yet, and so as an incentive, staff offered administrative review for future downtown permits. At the April 2nd meeting, there was a discussion about the appropriateness of staff doing the level of review versus Planning Commission at a hearing or City Council. And so this letter is requesting that the condition be reverted back to staff's original recommendation for administrative approval, rather than Planning Commission or City Council. And so with that, staff recommends by motion that the Planning Commission recommend a City Council that they approve downtown permit DT 2023-0012. And as I mentioned, staff is available for questions, as well as the applicant. They have their own presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Before I ask for questions here, can we hear from Public Works and/or about the letter? Or Heather?
Good evening. Heather Widom, Assistant City Attorney. Yes, so we received a letter, I think about an hour and a half ago, from their lawyer, and it continues to object to the bus shelter. We believe there is a proper nexus, and that the bus shelter is appropriate. We believe that this use of a grocery store will draw lots of people, many of which will use transit. By putting a bus stop at this location, we will complete access on Route 3, which is a transit route we have that uses Miller and Main. And so we think it is an appropriate request. And as far as the second request in the letter has to do with the incentive, as Ms. Zizanheni said, and we believe that that is fully within your discretion to determine whether you think the incentive should allow them to bypass Planning Commission and council, or simply the City Council, which is what you had preferred at the last meeting. I would, though, like to give Mr. Mueller an opportunity to provide some additional information about the bus shelter, and he has some information, I believe, maybe from Gee, who is our transportation leader.
I'm sorry, did you say that we'd asked to bypass City Council? Or did you mean Planning Commission? That we'd asked to not bypass it?
No, so the incentive was that because they're doing certain improvements at the site, they could have the zoning administrator approve future entitlements for this location. So you're approving like the whole box, the whole thing, but then remember on the second floor, there's going to be two large additional units. Those under our Downtown Specific Plan, because of their size, would have to come to the Planning Commission and the City Council for approval. Planning staff offered them an incentive based on the Downtown Specific Plan, it allows for incentives, that because you are already reviewing the totality of this project, that they could come for those entitlements only to the zoning administrator, that the zoning administrator would verify that it's an allowed use, and that everything's proper, and they would not come to you or the City Council, which they normally would be required to do. At your last meeting, so at your last meeting, planning staff said, oh, if you're uncomfortable with that, and you want an opportunity to see them, we can modify the incentive so that they will have to come to you. But they would still be getting an incentive, because they wouldn't have to go to City Council.
I see. I see. Thank you very much. Questions?
Could we let Mr. Mueller put a little more information into the record about the bus stop?
I think we could. Mr. Mueller?
Thank you Attorney Widom. Chair Dickerson, members of the commission, and Jim Mueller. So I just want to address a couple items on the letter specifically. There's the statement that there's no change in use. They're going from a commercial retail use to a grocery store and additional apparel retail. In the traffic study that was prepared for this project, it did note a significant increase in trips after accounting for pass-by trips and other reductions. So in totality, there is a increase in ADT of 3,300 trips, 85 AM peak hour trips, and 236 PM peak hour trips. So there is an increase in traffic generated by this use. How much of that is transit? Hard to tell. However, this site is a grocery store located in what's essentially a food desert that nearest grocery stores a mile away. People will be reliant on transit to get to this location if they're non-ambulatory, if they can't drive themselves. Current data I do know on terms of transit usage, where it's about 2% of users within the city have used transit over other modes of transportation. So if you say 2% of the 3,000 trips that are generated by this site, that's not really a correct analysis to use, but let's just say that for terms of proportionality, you know, that's 60 new trips generated. Current ridership data on Route 3 indicates that there's 3,000 riders per month on Route 3. So, you know, we're talking potentially 60 per day. That's a significant increase. That's a 50% increase in ridership on that one route. I would say that this is a proportional impact and request to make of this development.
Thank you very much. Questions for staff at this time? Commissioner?
Thank you Chair. Mark, getting back to the bus app, so what kind of improvements are we asking? Are we just asking for the shelter? Are we asking for street improvements turnout? It's really hard to see from the plan what we're asking for.
So Commissioner Seifert, we're looking for the bus shelter structure itself, and then the concrete pad in front of the, in the roadway, because the weight of the vehicle and the stopping, the asphalt that's there will likely shove, so we have a concrete structure that's there that way. When the buses do stop, we don't have shoving, and it's actually designed for the weight.
But we're not asking for any change in the street or roadway? We have the turnout available, we're just asking for...
Correct, so there's no new turnout to be constructed. We're having them stop in that existing right turn pocket that's there. So they're not relocating streetlights, no trees are being removed. My understanding is they're able, and it provides a nice street.
No electrical data, solar?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner. Further questions for staff at this time? No? No? All right. Let's go ahead and, well first, any disclosure by commissioners of ex parte communication?
None?
Seeing none, then we will move forward to the applicant's presentation. So whichever one or group of you want to rush the podium, you can. Or I guess lectern?
Yeah.
Chair Commissioners, thank you very much, staff.
If you could state your name, yeah, name and address.
Sarah Magano Withers, and Director of Entitlement and Development for the company. And I do want to address the letters from our attorney. First and foremost, the last meeting, I'm glad the letter came up today, because at the last meeting, it came up at the end. The reason that we were basically forced to send that in was because several days before our hearing, we received, the president of our company received a phone call from staff, and requesting basically to try to renegotiate the maintenance agreement that has been in place with the town center. That really, that really concerned us. Because it was a 9:15 call for a 9:30 Zoom meeting, or phone call with staff. It was a matter of 15, 30 minutes. Marvin, that has been here for three years, and myself, that we've been interfacing with your staff, we knew nothing about it. They went directly to the president of the company. That's why we went ahead. We looked at all the conditions of approval. We've been working very closely with your staff. You know, there are certain concessions that we are more than happy to make, as you have seen. We're making a major investment on this building. But that phone call was very, very alerting to us. And, you know, we're going to be long-term stakeholders when in the city of Santa Maria, especially with this, you know, building that we have here. This is something that, once we hold it, we don't typically sell our assets. We own and operate. And with this fantastic tenant that we want to put in place here, we don't foresee that we're going anywhere. But with that being said, we did ask regarding the bus stop. We want to make sure, because we've already been, our application has been in the system for quite some time. We had a meeting when we first bought the property over three years ago, basically thinking about what we were going to do. We came here with your staff to basically roll up our sleeves and figure out what we could do with the building, so that we can redevelop it. Then we went ahead, and, you know, years later, almost three years later, now we have a tenant. We filed our application back in December. There has been conversations with Marvin and your staff for several years. That's the other concern that we have with the extra level of review, is the timing. It's not so much the review, but it's how long does it take to get to getting our permits and being able to get our tenants open? Time kills deals. Right now, with the economic condition of our country, these tenants are, they're dropping left and right. We foresee that there's going to be a major announcement soon by one of the major pharmacies. That's probably not going to turn out well. And that's just the beginning of what's happening in the industry. So timing is everything. If there would be some type of, we believe that like your specific plan and the level of review that you're doing today is very appropriate, and that your zoning administrator or your staff has a very good handle on what you want to see, and they're good gatekeepers, as you could see. The, you know, we've gone back, we refined our elevations, we implemented your suggestions, but the timing is what we're concerned with. That's one of the other reasons why we did update and we commented on that level of review. If there was some way to shorten that period of time, maybe you have a roundtable? I don't know. I can, you know, I don't want to be disrespectful and try to make suggestions, but the timing is the absolute most critical point. In regards to the bus shelter, we would like to know, how long is it going to take? Is it going to hold up our building permits? Does that have to be completed before we can actually open? Or is it needs to be designed before we get our building permit? Those are all a lot of unknowns. So that is a major component that we would like to know, especially because it's on your public right of way. If that was something, we also have impact fees that we're paying because of the traffic, and they're very significant also. So, you know, we feel that maybe the impact fees, if it's something that staff could undertake to do the bus stop, that'd be great. We're already paying them. We don't know what they're going to be spent on, but there is a significant, you know, impact fee that we're going to be paying. So, but timing is everything. And so if there was some way that we could keep it administratively, that's why that was the only concession that we asked for. We did not ask for anything else. It was just the time. And if you have any questions, we're here, and we would like to, you know, participate whenever we can. But if we could have more defined timelines, dollar amounts, and the ultimate goal is just to get the grocery store open, and get the rest of the tenants before they're gone. Thank you. And we're here for any questions. And I'll turn it over to our architect.
Thank you. Sir, state your name for the record.
Absolutely. Pablo Garcia, Onyx Creative, and I'm the project manager with the architecture firm. We put a little presentation together with our staff, and what we wanted to is also to provide some insight in terms of where our approach was. We understand the context of the site, and, you know, where it's located, not just within the city, but greater, in the greater sense. And it is very much about a part about its location in the heart of the city, coming off, whether you're coming off of the 101, or, you know, a lot of the surface roads, whether it's Broadway and Main, and how it's approached. And being that it's right on the corner as well, and what its significance of that is. And so that's what some of our vignettes are also looking at it, some of those images and the contrast and the secondary. It's also looking at the walkability of the space and its relationship. There's already kind of a nice meandering walkway along Main. We have a sidewalk off of Miller. We're introducing our pedestrian walks that are coming into what we are calling sort of an outdoor walkable space. Let me see. So here's a, sorry, let me back up. So here's a shot coming from off of Broadway, and this is sort of the walkway that's going to lead right into the front here, and then this is coming from Miller. And also how these larger sidewalks then connect into those spaces and create also an environment for a walkable pedestrian-friendly space. Also at the corner, and then how we engage in the second floor, and how it relates to that podium, how it relates also to that walkability and the outdoor living that is sort of now very much opposite of what the thought process was with the mall, which, you know, you park, you go inside, and then everything, you walk within the interior. This is really now connecting back to the exterior. So when we were looking at the, you know, when we left last time, we sat down and we were looking at activating the second floor, that podium, and that space is also connected to an interior open space that connects, when you're looking down at the bottom, back to the mall, back to the parking structure. And the idea was, how do we can, how do we drive people also, not just from the streets, onto those exterior walking spaces, into those sitting areas? Get them up to the second floor, connect them to the mall, and vice versa. If you're coming in on the parking structure, how do you connect back into that space? And I think that interplay, and then bringing it from the greater outer, outside of Santa Maria's type, location, into the city center, into the space, and allowing that presence. And the weather here is very favorable. We always look at not just walkability, but also, you know, what's the experience being outdoors? It's not, our corporate office is in Cleveland, so we don't have a lot of months in Cleveland where we can have outdoor spaces to sit and have a nice ocean breeze where we have here. And I think that was one of the key things that we were looking at. So looking at outdoor spaces where we can incorporate also planting and trees, that, you know, these were some of the suggestions you had. We looked at, you know, adding additional structure, but the structure then it started to also convolute and tighten up the spaces up there. So we looked at, you know, redesigning some of these planters, looking at how to engage the planters also by putting benches around them, seating, and then creating, you know, sitting areas and spaces where people can congregate. um, you know, sitting areas and spaces where people can congregate and, and have a, have different types of activities where if it's people that are coming from the mall that are shopping, that are going to rest, move on, if there are people that are coming from the food court, people coming from a, a super, or, or if you just want to go hang out and read a book, you know, it's a, gives you different types of spaces, different types of options. And, and then how, how does it then relate back down to the, to the, even the parkings, the parking lot? Um, and, you know, there's a lot of sort of even festivals now and that, that are very much involved with the different parts of this, of the state. Um, and, you know, you can also, we were talking about amongst, amongst some of our younger staff of, you know, they were like, well, that's very much almost like a stage. You can have a band playing up there, you have different types of activities and this sort of also creates a stage for, for additional experiences in downtown. It's another perspective. And these are just, we're looking at the, at just the rendered elevations and, and then how it, how the, the, uh, approach off of Miller. Again, the corner. And, uh, we, we, I had a small exercise with one of our staff members and we're looking at the, the possibility of having it, this be that, the, uh, that market, marketplace and creating that node. So, this was kind of a little homage to Commissioner Blanco of his, his idea of like what it would, what it would feel like to have that additional presence here. And, um, that's it. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time, we appreciate it as well. Um, questions for the applicant at this time? Commissioner?
Thank you, Chair. Quick question regarding, um, the towers, um, on the L-Super building. You have signage and signage there. I know that's just for, um, example purposes, but is there going to be, is that specifically for L-Super's business or is that going to relate to the retailers that are on the side of the building?
Um, again, Pablo Garcia, Onyx Creative. Uh, Commissioner, uh, Mohaj- Mohajer?
Mohajer.
Mohajer. Um, yeah, so that the, uh, let me, let me back up. So, the, right now, the, the, um, the designated signage for L-Super, it's the one that's right in the middle, which is the marquee, the four small that are on the bottom to the left and right. And then the top one here on the side. Everything, and that's, these are all, these are all again potential, none of these are going to be part of the entitlement. These have to go through their own separate permit. They have to abide also by the, uh, the, the ordinance for, for, uh, for signage as well. And the master sign program, correct.
Okay, thank you for that. And then secondly, I wanted to take a closer look. I know this is just, um, superficial now, but like the potted, the planters at the bottom on the side in front of those four units, um, maybe a little bit more height. I really like the lush look when it comes to these type of, um, centers.
Let me see, I think we have a better shot, dead, head on.
Down there, yeah.
That, right there.
Yeah. And then maybe try to incorporate into the suggestion like string lightings, just to really enhance the walkability of the area. This is going to be, um, the terrace, I think, the first outdoor seating space for the mall. And so, I really think that this is like the prime time to invest in that and really be thoughtful about what we include. And you guys did a great job with the, with the furniture placement so far. Um, those are my suggestions, just making it a little bit more with the string lights, more welcoming and I like that marketplace, um, not Commissioner Blanco's idea, so that's just my input right now.
Uh, so Commissioner Mohajer, the, the, uh, the, those ballards that are there are also meant to be, uh, those are going to be lit as well. There's going to be, they're going to provide as well lighting, but I, I will, I will, um, take that back. I think we want to make, get, get enough foot candles on there so it's both safe and also walkable. We do have, uh, and it's part of our package was our, our, uh, our lighting plan and study, so we'll continue to look at that. But yeah, our intention is to have something that's, uh, appropriate and safe and, and ha- it offers a good environment, both during the day and obviously in the evening.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, th- thank you for that, um, presentation. Thank you for the renderings too. These, these really, really help visualize a little bit better and, and the landscaping has really made a big difference, the, on the rendering. Looks, looks very good actually to me. Maybe the only question I have is that there was one more issue, I think maybe Commissioner Lopez, uh, is the one that brought it up, maybe he'll add to it, but the, uh, another circulation in that one area was also something that came up at last meeting. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at that. I know it was sort of out of your control to some degree because it was off-site. Um, was there maybe any consideration given to what could happen there potentially? Um, and, and again, Commissioner Lopez brought it up, maybe he has a little bit more, uh, insider direction, but I know that that was kind of something he brought up, that, not sure if you guys had a chance to look at it.
Uh, Commissioner Blanco, we in, we did not look at the, we left it pretty much as is. Um, and that's, if you, if you look at where it's really where that, that, um, traffic's coming from the, the, uh, the vehicular traffic's coming from the mall and then turns down and onto, uh, Miller, um, we did not, uh, address that.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner, questions?
You know, I, I did, I did have one question and this came up after the last meeting was, was there ever any thought into shared, um, loading docks as opposed to you guys building that one on the, on the west side? Maybe a reciprocal agreement to use those existing? That came up after the meeting, I wasn't sure if that was ever explored or not.
Um, no, we, we, we didn't explore that. That was pretty much in-
Make a mention. We did study it in detail. And Marvin, if you want to add something to that? If you notice, we did relocate, um, because we felt that it was more conducive and it was in a better location here. But I'll let Marvin speak to that regarding the, the loading docks. But, um, the grocery store, that wouldn't work for us. Do you want to speak to that?
It was just a, a comment.
Then Marvin, because, um, Marvin has looked at this inside out. If there's anybody that knows the project, go ahead.
Poor Marvin, looks like he just got thrown under the bus.
My name is Marvin Jarman, I'm in severe back pain. Anyway, Commissioner, what was your question? Could you repeat it again?
It just, one of the things that I thought about after our last meeting, I know there's that new loading dock that runs north and south on the west side of the building. And the, the thought was, was there any, uh, consideration to shared reciprocal, uh, dock usage at the two existing docks to the south?
Well, the, the one at the northwest corner that's parallel to town center is primarily for upstairs use. Uh, ju- just as the one, the truck, two truckwheels that we are building into the building are for the, uh, L-Super use. And our overflow, uh, for the bread and soda guys can either be where the existing strip area is now that runs, uh, east and west along the, uh, jet, along the, I guess, east and west from, uh, our building, uh, towards the, uh, uh, overpass of further west on town center. So, and also the bread and soda trucks, if they have overflow, they can, yes, they can use the, uh, additional loading area at the northwest corner. Because bread and soda guys come at different times of the day, as you all have noted, you know? And their trucks are smaller, their vans, step vans, they pull in and pull out. So, we, we wanted to have, make sure we had plenty of space where, uh, we could accommodate that. And L-Super did ask for.
Okay, that, that was all. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner?
And it's more operations and function. That's why they need to be separated so that there's ease of, you know, access and, and then it works better with the circulation. And in regards to, um, the comment that you made, Commissioner, regarding, um, the, the sidewalk, I think that once we have everything in place and you activate that space, I think it's going to be very different. I, I think it'll work better. Um, one of the other reasons why there was, um, concern regarding making too many changes is because of the circulation of, of, um, of the way the parking lots laid out, the, you know, drive aisles, the sidewalks, there's so much happening here that, um, it's very, we really start tampering a lot with like the accessibility. So, that's another reason why, you know, to, to avoid any conflicts and opening a can of worms. But I think once you have everything in place with all the new landscaping, even like the, uh, planters, et cetera, they're going to, you know, serve kind of like, um, you know, um, uh, blocks so that way cars, et cetera, you know? It gives that visual, like slow the traffic down and so that people can walk and feel very safe and comfortable that, you know, and then cars stay in their lane. So, I think that, that'll also help.
Thank you. Commissioner Seifert?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, ma'am, I, I just, I wanted to clarify, uh, your, your, your concern about timing, uh, because we, we talked about timing last time and that's why we're here today.
I know, and we're very grateful.
To make sure that we can get you to city council.
Yes.
Um, so what is it that you're concerned with? Because, um, the city council really does like us to look at these projects before it goes to them. And if you remember on the last meeting, what I, what I stated is, a really good method of this is to come to a study session. Let us take a look at it in a very, uh, no, no decisions are made at that session. And with your new tenants, they come in, they show us what they want, we get to, we get to talk about it, look at it and give any kind of suggestions at that point. And then when you do come to us at a hearing, most of those decisions have been made and most of, most of, because a lot of times you'll mold it to, so that it fits and then we feel a lot more comfortable giving it to the council. So, what is it that you're trying to achieve on the timing? I didn't quite get it.
Well, um, you know, we, we had to go to another committee. I mean, there, I think there's like four steps, four committees that we had to go to before we get to you. And first of all, I want to mention that we're very grateful for being able to get on this agenda very quickly and for, you know, you being so gracious to take this under consideration and your comments, like you see there were, we incorporated whatever we could, um, they, and they were very thoughtful and they just make the project better. The only thing is that if we could shorten down the, the time period, the other thing also is that the tenants that are coming into the second floor, obviously if there's going to be major changes to the exterior, it's going to automatically trigger, um, you know, some type of level of review. So, um, if it's significant, uh, you know, what we see, I don't think like with the mall or the tenants that they have there, that we necessarily, um, they all come in, you know, whenever a new tenant comes, comes to town. Like I mentioned before, the only thing that we're very concerned with is time. I don't think that anybody here, any of the comments that we receive were unreasonable. We, we believe that you're, that you understand, um, the, the design, the constraints, the timing, et cetera, and we're grateful for that. But if we can, if there's some way to figure out how that could be streamlined, uh, we would appreciate it because the timing is the only thing. You know, we submitted in December, even though Carol, Dana, your staff has been fantastic, you still have a process to go through. Do we have to go through the whole thing or is there a shortened, you know, you go to planning commission and then that's it? How do we do that? Or it's a study session? I think that would, that, that's our only concern. What is that time period?
Okay, and I, and I think staff is better, uh, better suited to ha- to handle that question. As far as what, what is it going to take to get the tenants in, I believe is what the question is? And what is our role going to be and what other committees? Because I'm sure they've had, uh, the traffic studies and the, uh, the downtown studies and I believe that's the other committees you're talking, real-
Yeah.
So, so what, what is the process for the tenants coming up then, I guess is the question?
Commissioner Seifert and, uh, rest of the commissioners. So, um, currently in the downtown specific plan, there's a matrix and it's based on the location of the projects and the size. So, in this case, because it exceeds, I think, ten thousand square feet and it's within a, an area that's designated, I think, as a cr- as a critical corner in the plan, that means that any projects that come forward within this area are, they're required to go to your planning commission for a recommendation to city council. But as was mentioned earlier, the downtown specific plan has in it the ability to grant incentives to lessen or, or to change that requirement, to allow it to be at a zoning administrator level, um, or just with your planning commission, not have to go to council. And so, the committees that, um, are being discussed here are the, there's the downtown revitalization committee. So, when we have projects in the downtown area, we usually schedule them for a downtown revitalization committee meeting. Commissioner Blanco is on that committee as well as two city council members and a park, wreck and parks commissioner. So, uh, what we've been doing is having projects typically, once they're deemed complete, they are then scheduled for the downtown revitalization committee and then we were moving forward to doing planning commission and then going to council, um, with it after that. I think this, so we did leave out the step of an additional planning commission study session before your meeting because we had the downtown committee and we have a planning commissioner on that committee. So, it's really, um, I think really depends on the project and what, the reason we skipped the planning commission study session for this one was in an effort to streamline it, uh, the timeline a little bit and also, um, because we had a commissioner on the downtown committee who could maybe speak about what was discussed at that meeting and any recommendations.
So, so this all has to happen just for a tenant? I mean, they've already, we've already looked at the bill, let's say we've already looked at the building, we've approved it, they've done the building, so they, they bring a tenant in and they still have to go through this process?
It's really at staff's discretion. I think for a future tenant, um, we probably wouldn't require the downtown revitalization committee, though that committee we usually reserve for the initial phase of the project when you're making, like, when you're coming forward with a project where you're building a new building or making a, a big change. I think a tenant coming in as it is right now in this building would require a planning commission hearing and a city council hearing to approve it.
Even if, even if no exterior modifications to the building?
Yes, that's currently true.
Because of the tenant?
Right, it's because of the size of the tenant's space and the location. So, what we had said initially is, could the tenant coming in later, could that be left up to staff to review at a zoning administrator level? If there aren't any exterior modifications to the building being made, you would essentially just be approving the tenant if it came to you. Um, and in the downtown specific plan, there's, most retail uses are allowed in the commercial buildings like this. So, um, then we, we did update that condition for this meeting based on the discussion at the last hearing. So, we did change it to say that a future tenant would have to come to a planning commission hearing, but it wouldn't have to go to city council. Ideally, I think if we're just approving a new tenant going in, it could be at the zoning administrator, but it's really at your discretion to determine, you know, what you would, uh, prefer in this situation.
I, I would feel more comfortable with that if there was absolutely no changes to the outside of the building, uh, and then there's a sign permit that they have to apply for anywhere and so that has to be, all those conditions have to be met. So, um, I could see, I could, I could, I have to think about that, but I could possibly see supporting something like that. But, uh, yeah, so, so we, we're, it sounds like the revitalization, uh, isn't going to be an issue. And if, and if we do decide, if, if we do decide that you need to come to planning commission, I highly recommend a stopover at the study session because that will give you a lot of good ideas as to what we're going to be looking for in the hearing and rather than having to rush a hearing and come back, um, you, you already have heard from us at one point and then you can model your, uh, depending on what you want to listen to, what you don't, you can, you can model your plans for that, for an easier hearing. So, hopefully that can help you. Uh, it sounds like we're doing everything we can to, to try to minimize the, the, the meetings and the timeframe at this point. So, is, is that sound reasonable to you?
Uh, yes, just like I mentioned again, it's timing. Um, you know, I, we were, you're, uh, everyone here has been fantastic. I, I want to pre- premise that, okay? You're great. We go to other cities, you guys are above and beyond. But the extra layers, if there's some way- But the extra layers, if there's some way to figure out that timeline, like, what is it, just to streamline that part, I don't think that you have anybody coming to town that, especially at this magnitude, that would say no. Because, you know, like Commissioner Blanco, with his comments, your comments, your other Commissioner, um, with, you know, like the marketplace and things like that, that just makes everything better. Today, the, you know, the, the planters with taller flowers, et cetera, that's fantastic. We could do that, you know?
And that's, that's what I'm saying, that's, that's kinda study session stuff? And we don't really do that a lot in hearings, because in, if you've come to study session, you've already made those changes, and it makes the hearing a lot easier.
Yeah.
Um, so that, that's one way to speed it up. I'm just trying to give you a kinda, some pointers.
Thank you.
On that.
Yeah.
Um, and it sounds like they're, they're trying like heck to, to.
They are.
Streamline.
You have great staff, extremely knowledgeable, some of the best planners that I have met, and I've, I've, believe it or not, no, I'm kidding, it's like 30 years that I've been in, in, you know, in this profession, and I've met a lot of different planners throughout the state and outside of this California, and they're fantastic.
Excellent.
So you have a very good system, your downtown master plan is great, we're very happy to be one of the catalysts for that, you know, so just time. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention, that on Item 41, where it indicates a Caltrans encroachment permit, and there's a caveat there which also concerns me about the, um, the, the bus shelter, is that it indicates, um, a note to this effect shall appear on the plans during building plan check. Um, at what level, that, that's where we're concerned with.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna discuss that next.
Okay, great.
I'm gonna go into that, I wanted to talk to Mark about that a little bit more.
Thank you.
Just wanted to address your timing issue first.
Thank you.
And I was headed right into the bus stop.
Yeah, the only thing that we have concerns about is timing, and as long as it doesn't become a runaway train.
Time is money.
Or toss.
Yes.
Thank you.
Heard loud and clear.
Sorry.
No, 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 it's, it, it is, it, it really is, I totally understand.
Right now, yes.
Yeah, and we're in an uncertain market at this point, so, thank you. So, uh, Mark, just getting back to the bus stop, so, um, isn't Main Street, uh, that's a, what, what kind of section do we have on Main Street right now? I'm guessing it's a heavy-duty section on the AC?
Yeah, so Commissioner Seifert, the, uh, bus stop would be on Miller, um, the bus, and would not require a Caltrans encroachment permit, it would be issued at the Public Works Department office.
Okay, so that, that's a huge, huge help right there, you, you don't have to worry about Caltrans.
The shelter itself is a.
We, we talked about the shelter, I was worried more about the street.
I was just, it's a, it's a prefab, uh, structure, so, um, there's no, they don't have to.
But we, we do have to encroach on the street and pour a pad.
Correct. Yeah, so there will need to be a, a concrete pad that needs to be constructed in front of, in the roadway itself, the asphalt roadway needs to be taken out, a concrete pad will need to be constructed.
But, but Caltrans would not be involved in that?
Correct. Uh, there would be a Caltrans permit required for the sidewalk on Main Street, because there are lifts, cracks, a non-ADA compliant sidewalk.
There's nothing we can do about that.
Correct, but my, it's, sorry to cut you off, the, my experience with Caltrans on sidewalk permits, it's a much more expedited permit, because you're not trying to, um, match flow lines, you're, it's, it's a relatively simple encroachment permit.
And they want to see the sidewalk fixed.
Correct.
As we all do, so, uh, okay, I understand that. Um, and I'm guessing, so my, yeah, so that, my point is moot on, on Main Street, so the section on Miller is probably not a heavy-duty section, because there's no truck traffic.
Correct.
So it wouldn't, uh, it wouldn't work if we didn't put the pad in.
Correct.
Okay. Um, as far as the, uh, timing, uh, building permit-wise versus, uh, a bus stop, so is there some way that we can give them time to build the bus stop, or is there something, uh, what, what is that going to, what is that going to look like as far as getting a final, getting them moved in? Is there a timeframe, what, that was a question, what, what, what can we do to accommodate?
I mean, typically, we require it prior to occupancy, um, so that's their last step prior to operating the, the business, I, we wouldn't ask for it prior to building permit issuance, or, um, and the note to show it on the plans is essentially, call out a bus shelter to be placed at this location, where it's a great, um, exhibit for, Arrow B is exactly where we would want this shelter to be, it's, uh, great pedestrian access to the front of the building, uh, there's an existing, uh, extension of the sidewalk to that curb face, so, uh, it's a great location for a bus stop.
And there's sidewalk work being done at the same time anyway, which has to be done for occupancy?
Correct.
Yes, ma'am? Is that all right, Chair?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
It's up to, it's up to the Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for allowing us to be very, it's a little loose, but, um, uh, so my question would be, um, i- if, if those specs are already determined, they weren't provided previously. So we don't have, uh, time factor, cost, uh, design, et cetera, and if it's contingent about occupancy, that does concern me. Um, it, you know, uh, we also have the mitigation fees that we're gonna be paying. What are those mitigation fees, what are they for?
So, the details for the bus stop itself, those are standard details, um, so I can provide those at any time, if you'd like them, I can email them within this meeting. Um, with regards to growth mitigation fees, those are paid by the new developments that create impacts on our roadway system, there's named projects within our growth mitigation list, so those are traffic signals, those are interchanges, those are road widenings, they have to be named projects, uh, bus stops are not named projects within that growth mitigation list.
Okay. Um, you know, for the sake of, uh, timing, and especially because this is gonna be tied into the certificate of occupancy, and everything's wonderful, we, you know, say yes to things, and then we get down to the end, and they're ordering food, and they have drop dead deadlines, we're very concerned about being held up. We would like to, if we can make a contribution and the city can take care of it, we'd much rather do that. And, you know, we're willing to donate $20,000 for something like that, um, since it is something that you already know, and it's very specific what it's going to, we'd much rather do that, and not being contingent and hold up the certificate of occupancy. That, that's at the level of concern that we're at about losing our tenant. So, if, you know, if it's more or less, we don't care, um, that's fine, go ahead.
So the Public Works Department is, uh, willing to accept an in-lie fee for the bus stop pad and shelter improvements, if that's acceptable to the commission.
And you'll work out what that amount is?
Correct.
Okay.
After, I don't have the pencil numbers, but I can get that to the applicant and work with them.
Please.
That seems reasonable.
And, and that's something in the future, if that could be presented ahead of time, um, that would be very helpful to developers, so that there's not this type of discussion when that, this, you know, and the stress.
Yeah, it's very stressful.
Thank you.
Commissioner Seifert, you got more questions?
I've, I've got one other item, uh, I got my notes all over the place. Can we go back to the marketplace logo? And, uh, Commissioner Blanco, thank you, I, 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 I love it, it's just the one thing that, that, that scared me about a little bit was, uh, we have Community Bank of Santa Maria here in town.
Isn't that their logo?
And I think that's their logo.
Well, we can work on that.
It's, it's very.
Somewhere we want.
Yeah, I think, it's like, I mean, we love it, but I think you'll have a little fight with the bank for that one, it's very, very similar, uh, your mountains are a little different, but everything else is pretty much the same, uh, and, but, love the idea, and, and, uh, thank you for the idea, Marketplace, I mean, it, it, it gives it a nice name, a good feel, and, uh, just, uh, finishing up what my time here, um, thank you very much for lowering those towers, uh, doing the improvements on the, uh, on the promenade, uh, the, the addition of the, uh, plants and the, and the renderings, uh, I think, I think you've really shown that, uh, you're willing to make some, some nice changes for the building, and, uh, I, I think you've, you've really helped it out, uh, by making those changes.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
We're very proud, and we're very grateful to all of you. All the comments were fantastic, and it's really nice to see how well everyone works together, and that you really understand both sides of the table. The other thing also I do wanna bring up, that this is the, uh, Santa Maria Town Center, so, uh, we, obviously, we need to take that into consideration with our neighbors, um, we will be letting them know what the wishes of the commission and the recommendation to make sure that there's no conflict, because the CCNRs are about this big, so, we'll have to go through all that, but we love it, and so does the tenant, thank you.
Well, thank you guys, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, I had a couple of questions also, um, and on their way back they go, there we are. The first is, I, um, I agree with Commissioner Seifert and the others, the, what you guys have done, adjusting things, um, I really appreciate, I mean, you, you listened to what we had to say, um, you made the modifications as, as you could, and, uh, we really appreciate it, I mean, and, uh, I also, um, thank you for recognizing that we are trying to get this thing through for you. That would also be the case in future things, I mean, we're, we, we are gonna try to do this stuff on a timely basis, I, I have to say, I, I, I'm not terribly comfortable with bypassing the study session, and what, the reason for that is that this meeting here, which isn't delaying things, but could have delayed things, didn't need to exist at all. Had you, had you come to a study session prior, then all of these small items would have been gone over, and by the time you got to the public hearing section, all this would have been taken care of two weeks ago, and then it would have, you know, made its way over to, to the City Council. So, uh, I for one am not terribly, I'm open to, to skipping, uh, that process, and I, I apologize, I understand your, your, the tension that you must be under, um, and we will certainly do, um, everything possible to, to make sure that, that we mitigate that for you as much as possible. For staff, I have a question, the, um, um, the balcony area, um, does that go in perpetuity? So, you get new tenants in, they have new concepts, does that, you know, they, they have a, their concept is a barren wasteland up there, um, does that, does that flow with, with their desires, or does it flow with our desires to have it this very pleasant, nice thing that they've put together here?
Head, Chair Dickerson, the, um, the expectation would be that it would be designed as approved on the plans. So if the landscape plan shows that the expectation is to be, that it's built and maintained with this design, that's what, that's what it needs to remain as.
Okay. Um, and the, um, going back also to the, to coming before us for the particular tenants, I, um, it, I just want to refresh the, the commission and staff, is that, over the years, um, occasionally, we, uh, we question the, the quantity of certain types of businesses, or this, or that, or the other thing. This is a very prominent area, and, and now becomes even more so, because we're talking about the second floor, with, so it's gonna have a lot more visibility. Um, so, us wanting to take a look, and, um, uh, I, I think is, is important, uh, from the standpoint that you have the perspective of, of this commission, which, even though staff had done a wonderful job two weeks ago, and everybody bringing this thing forward, we obviously had things that we wanted to, to see adjusted. And from that standpoint, um, because it's so prominent, you know, that may be the case also, as, as new tenants go onto that second floor. Um, I, I recall, I think, uh, Commissioner Seifert and I, a few years ago, railed on, it's like, you know, what's the deal with all these dollar stores? And, I'm not sure that we would wanna see a dollar store in that spot, you know, and so it becomes one of those things that's like, we, we wanna have our input on it, and maybe staff is not necessarily aware of, of, you know, those type of sentiments about whatever the, whatever the thing is. Um, so from that standpoint, uh, like I said, I, I prefer to see it. Can you go into more detail about the, the kind of, it was, it was presented to us by you as being sort of a last-minute negotiation on, on what? Could you explain that to me? You said that somebody from the, staff from the city called.
It was regarding, we have, uh, there's a maintenance agreement that was, um, that was negotiated with the Town Center.
Mm-hmm.
Many, many, many years ago. Um, and, uh, so at the last minute, there was some conversation, um, um, to, for it to be renegotiated. We cannot do that. Uh, we're only one of the owners that are there, and this is a long-term agreement that has been in place. Um, you know, what we can do in regards to the maintenance is install the new trees, the new landscaping, um, anything that needs to be done in that regard, but we cannot agree to anything. That's something that it's, I mean, that's a, a long-term agreement, and it was something that staff was instructed to call, and within 15, 30 minutes, um, they were in a conversation with the president of our company at the last minute, and that, that was very alarming.
Sure, and, and where did that leave off?
Uh, that, that's what produced the letter to, um, to the city at the last meeting. We would have never had our attorney write any letter or anything, we believe in coming here, trying to work it out, but we wanted to make sure that it was part of the record, and that it was very clear, that that's not something that should be tied into our entitlements. But, uh, that was removed, and we're grateful for that.
Okay, so it's been, at this point, the, the.
Yes.
Um, alteration has been removed, and it's basically just the standard alteration.
Yes, but I just wanted to make it clear, it was not something, we don't operate that way, that we come in and, you know, have our attorney start writing letters over the conditions, unless it was something very.
Well, I mean, I'll, I'll be frank, I'm asking about it because I was alarmed to hear.
Yeah.
I, we, we don't like receiving, I can't tell you the number of times, uh, for staff or, or commissioners have railed on about receiving a letter at the last moment, nor would I hope that we don't do that to others.
Yeah.
Because if we don't like it, why would they? So.
I think it was a misstep, and that's what we take it as. Like I mentioned before, everybody has been fantastic, we're very happy to be in Santa Maria, and we're gonna be here for a long time, and we look forward to the ribbon cutting, and everybody's gonna be really proud of this, you know, center that's gonna be activated and full of life. It's so sad to drive by right now, and we have a car wash, you know, going there and things like that, but we need this full of life.
Yeah. No, I think it's, it looks like a very nice project.
Thank you.
And, and once again, I really appreciate everything you did on the facades and the other areas, it, it just looks wonderful, so.
And it was our architects working overtime to try to get all this together, because we just think of, you know, lower this or do that, but there's a lot that goes behind the scenes.
And you had a very, you had a very short window to be able to get here tonight with all this, so.
Yeah, and thank you to, you know, Dana and Carol, because they also had to, you know, hustle and get all the reports together and make it all be seamless, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, and, uh, yeah, and we, we do appreciate, uh, all the comments, and I think what we wanted to do, and I think we kinda felt like we missed the opportunity to also do this at our last meeting, to, to tell the story, and I think a lot of that has to also do with your better understanding and, and, and your comfort level, so, thank you for that as well.
Thank you very much, sir. Um, any further questions for the applicant at this time? Okay, then I'm gonna go ahead and open the meeting to the public, uh, is there any written communications, um, other than the, the, the one from the attorneys, public comments, any rebuttals to be heard, blah, blah, blah? Anything, any additional written communications? No? Okay. Then we will go ahead and, um, close the public hearing, and discussions and decisions of the item by the commissioners. Commissioner Seifert, you wanna start it off?
Yeah, I'm really happy with the changes that have been made, and I feel comfortable with this project at this point. Um, it's really nice to have somebody coming in and, and taking that project and that property.
I'm sorry, can you speak a little closer to your mic there? I don't, yeah, there you go. They, they whine about it, they whine about it from the heavens above.
No, they ask us about it, yeah. But, uh, yeah, thank you for, for hearing us and coming back with a, a modified, uh, elevation, and, uh, as you can see, we're trying really hard to. And as you can see, we're trying really hard to work with you and understand the timeline, and how important it is in this environment to get that tenant in there and get, selling some groceries, and hopefully get the next tenants in there. And I think it's going to be something that's really going to help our city by getting that thing revitalized and alive again, just like you said. So, I just, thank you for coming to Santa Maria. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I think it looks better than before. I think the signage placeholder breaks down that tower element a little bit better. Yeah, I like the changes, and with respect to the bypassing the city council, I've been on this commission a long time, and I know when we first did the downtown specific plan in 2007, it was updated in 2012, right? And 2012 identified those critical corners, and it was specifically because the city council wanted to see anything over 10,000 square foot, especially on this corner, Broadway Main. I feel more comfortable the city council making that decision on whether or not to bypass the city council. And maybe in the future, an incentive could be to bypass the downtown specific, the downtown revitalization committee instead. And, you know, I don't know if that, I don't know how that works, because the other thought I had was, you know, we have a study session with the zoning administrator and the planning commission, and let that move forward. But here's a question. If the zoning administrator and the applicant are at a deadlock, doesn't it go to planning commission anyway?
Yes, I believe so. One item I was going to mention is, I think we can get these to study sessions in a timely manner, if your commission's willing to have longer study sessions. One of the, and we can speak more about this tomorrow at our study session, but one issue that I've been running into lately is we've had so many projects, that we are just running out of dates to have them. So, without having like three on a study session. Like tomorrow, we have two items, and I try not to have more than two, but we could add a third one if you're willing to stay a little bit longer, and then it would be a little faster. So, those are just adjustments that we could make as well, and then you could see more projects more quickly, and I don't have to push them out by a few, another month or something like that to find a date.
Thank you, Dana. So, yeah, so I think it would be, I would like to go to city council, let them make that, make that decision. Other than that, I like the project. Thank you.
And commissioners, if I could make one more, just say one more thing. So, this ultimately is going to go to city council with that particular incentive in it, so they will be making the decision about whether they're okay with the future tenants coming to you and stopping there, or if they also want to see them. So, that will happen as part of this permit.
Commissioner, I'll go.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I do want to thank the applicant and our staff for really working the last two weeks to get this back together. I mean, a lot of work, I can tell went into it, and they did a good job of addressing our comments and our concerns. Looks really, really good. And I do agree with Commissioner Lopez, I think we'll ask, let city council determine whether or not they're okay with the incentive. But in terms of streamlining the process, you know, that's always a challenge, right? There's a process, and streamlining it would be ideal in every case. And we do have to be sensitive to timing too, because, you know, timing is money, just like Commissioner Seifert mentioned. But I think that also that if we go through the right process, I think we can also streamline it, and I think the study session, my experience has been very, very helpful. I had the benefit of being at the downtown revitalization, so I had a preview. Nevertheless, there were some comments that I still brought up, but that study session, I think saves time, and I think it can be scheduled in a way that probably not impact your overall schedule. So, I think they are beneficial. It does save us time at these meetings. We've had plenty of meetings where they go very smooth, and they're quick, because we've had a study session. So, I think taking that into account is good. I don't think that downtown revitalization necessarily may be required for, like you said, Dana, for these other applications, but a study session would be good, and it would help probably streamline things overall. But back to the project, I think it's going to definitely make that area look much nicer, and it's going to activate that area and basically bring life to an area that right now is completely dead. So, yeah, I think it looks very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Mahajer.
Thank you. Yeah, I have to piggyback off of my fellow commissioners. I feel like everyone's really looking forward to this project, and how much life it's going to bring to that corner. As to the incentive regarding the tenants, I do have to agree that I'm comfortable with city council making that decision. This is such a cornerstone of those two main arterial streets of Santa Maria. People come across that so many times of the day. People see it all the time from their homes, so I just really want to ensure that city council has that input there. But again, I'm very excited with how much life this is going to bring, that terrace. You guys know I love it, and thank you for making that contribution to that area, where we appreciate also all the hard work in updating the visuals. It looks really nice.
Thank you very much. If I get a sense of the commission, things are looking pretty good for you at the moment, so that's good. But I, first, us continuing to beat the drum about study session isn't, you are not the focus of what those comments are coming from, so don't, I mean, it happened, and, you know, with your thing, you thought it was the most streamlined, but really, I think it's this commission talking to the staff. So, when we're beating that drum, really, we're not, you know, we're not doing it because we don't think that you don't get it. You've moved beyond that. Once again, I very much appreciate everything that you've done to look at the comments that we made in the past public hearing. You've done a really, really nice job of addressing those. I think that corner will substantially be improved by you being there, and I certainly will be supporting that. I think that what you've worked out, or will be working out with Public Works regarding the thing, the bus stop, addresses your concerns about potential delays in timing, and just kind of get that off of your plate, and something you worry about. And like the other commissioners, I do think that the city council should be taking a look at that last item and have them, you know, make the final decision as to whether or not they want to be skipped in that process. My guess is they probably won't, but it's a new city council from years ago when that was put forth. So, once again, thank you very much. Absolutely, we really appreciate it, and I need to hear a motion. I guess I don't need to hear a motion. Heather, do you have something to say?
Thank you, Chair. I feel the need to clarify something, because I, I'm just not sure, I can count noses, and I want to make sure everybody knows, right now, the permit, condition number five, provides the applicant with an incentive that new tenants, a floor area of 10,000 or greater, will be processed only to the planning commission and not the council. So, if you approve it as is, that's what it says. If you want to change that and eliminate that incentive so that it goes to you and the city council, you have that discretion.
I think the thought was that we would leave that in there, and that once this percolates to the city council, that at that point, they would make the decision as to whether or not they want to peel that off or not.
And that's certainly fine. We can leave it in that way, and then if they want, they could delete that or modify that incentive. That's fine. I just wanted to make sure you all knew how it was reading.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I think, are we good with that? Yeah? Okay. All right, so I need, I...
Sorry, Commissioner. If I just could, when you make the motion, if there could be a modification to condition 43, to allow for an in-lu payment of the, our shelter and platform for the bus.
Thank you very much. Dana, Carol, do you have anything before I make a stab at it again? Okay. We need to hear a motion.
Okay, got a little harder. So, the modification that you need, how do you want that worded, Mark?
Allow for the payment of an in-lu fee prior to issuance of building permit? Just looking at the either/or, either prior to first occupancy, install the bus shelter and waiting area? Continue.
We've got a $20,000 dollar...
I haven't run the numbers on the cost. Let me run the numbers on the cost. Obviously, I'm not trying to put $200,000 on, but I need to know the actual cost.
Could it be an either/or situation? I mean, if we come up with a number that's, yeah, crazy for you, then you could always do it yourself, you know? An either/or option.
I'm totally open to having it be either, prior to first occupancy, do the work, or pay an in-lu fee, acceptable to the city.
Okay. I'm going to give it a shot. So, by motion, I would recommend that the city council approve downtown permit number DT 2023-0012, with the modification to item number 43, that will allow for the applicant to pay an in-lu fee for the bus stop and bus pad, if they so choose to do so, before occupancy.
Was it before occupancy or before the permit?
Ideally, pay the fee prior to building permission, so we can build it prior to occupancy.
If they choose to do the in-lu, we need it prior to building permit.
Building permissions, so we can build the shelter for the people to use it for this impact.
We need to make sure that we count those numbers at the same time.
Absolutely.
And as our friend stated, that is a taking, and we strongly believe that, so that's something that we need to discuss.
Are you good?
I don't believe I am.
Okay.
Right, Heather, I'm...
No, I think we're fine.
Don't write that down.
I think the motion, tell me if you agree, would be that we would modify number 43 to, they could either install it as set forth in number 43 prior to first occupancy, or pay an in-lu fee prior to building permits. That would be what we would do tonight. Then, between now and the city council meeting, Mr. Mueller will reach out to the applicant and discuss the, as he stated, he'll send them the specs for the bus shelter, more information about the bus shelter, and the potential cost of the bus shelter. Hopefully, they can work all that out. If there's any loose ends, I guess we'll discuss it at the council.
As modified by Attorney Widdam. There you go.
If that's agreeable to you, you can just say as modified.
As modified by Attorney Widdam. So, that's my motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we need a roll call.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahajer?
Aye.
Chair Dickerson?
Aye. Congratulations. Thank you very much for bringing this project to our city.
Hope your back feels better.
Yep.
Oh, I feel, I feel for you.
Okay.
Have a nice night.
Yeah, it was, huh? What should have been simple, all of a sudden got very convoluted towards, yeah, that's right. Okay, so, we are now moving on to the oral reports from Planning Commissioner and staff.
All right, thank you. So, a couple of updates for you. Last night at city council, the VES ordinance for the battery energy storage systems was reviewed by the city council. It was approved, and their approval did include the recommendations that your commission made as well. So, that will come back for a second reading at the next city council meeting. I think that's on May 6th, or May 5th, probably. And then tomorrow, there is a study session at 1:30 at Shepherd Hall in the library. We've got two items to go over with you. One of them is an amended plan for the new splash and dash car wash over in the Eno's specific plan area. The car wash was approved a number of years ago, and they want to make a few adjustments to it, so we're going to go over that with you tomorrow. And then also, I'm going to review the updates to the ADU ordinance. There were some updates that went into effect in January of 2025, so it's become our annual ADU ordinance update. There's not a lot of changes, but, you know, a few, and I just wanted to go over those with you. So, that's what we have for tomorrow, and I don't have any other updates unless you have any questions.
Do you have any updates on future dates for study sessions and planning? I mean, what do you have, what do you have coming up?
Yeah, so we do not have any items scheduled for May 7th or May 8th. So, after the study session tomorrow, the next time we would be meeting is May 21st for a hearing. And then, right now on May 22nd, we also don't have any items for that study session, and I do have a note that that study session would also have to be in the moon room, because Shepherd Hall isn't available that day. So, right now, we don't have any items scheduled for that date. So, yeah, just looking ahead is tomorrow, which is April 17th, and then May 21st for a hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
What's going on at the old David's Bridle? If you're privy to...
Yeah, I think I can mention, it's a dental office.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Mahajer.
Quick question, Dana. Can you remind me who the applicant is for the splash and dash?
Yes, it's Jacob Weintraub, and Pat Cusack, I think, is involved in that as well.
Okay. Thank you so much, I wanted to confirm.
Anything else? Thank you.